I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education to order. There are two closed session items on tonight's agenda. Student expulsions in two cases, Education Code Section 48918F, and collective bargaining matters, discussion with negotiator Daniel Thigpen, Executive Director, Labor Relations and Government Affairs regarding CSEA Chapter 127, General Operations Support, chauffeurs, teamsters, local number 150 transportation, supervisors, teachers, and certificated supervisory units, and regarding nonrepresented groups, management and confidential units, Government Code Section 54957.6. We do not have any speaker cards on closed session agenda items. We will now move into closed session and will return to open session at 6:30. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education back to order. The meeting is being audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district's website. Board meetings are being held in person in the boardroom at the district office, and the community is welcome to attend. The meeting may also be viewed on the district's YouTube channel where it's being livestreamed. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Zima Creason, Board President. To my left is Mr. Saul Hernandez. To his left is Mr. Ben Avey, Ms. Paula Viesquez, and Ms. Tanya Krevcek, Board members. To my right is Superintendent Melissa Passinelli, and to her right is Board Administrative Assistant Stephanie Cunningham. Board Vice President Pam Costa is absent tonight. Individuals who are attending the meeting in person and would like to offer public comment, we ask that you complete a speaker request card available at the staff table. You will be called on at the appropriate time during the meeting. Please note that Board by law 9323 limits visitor comments to two minutes per speaker with no more than 30 minutes per single topic. Time will be extended for any speaker who uses an interpreter. Please note that public comments, including your name, become part of the public record. We are now at Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for June 13th?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Viesquez, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Krevcek, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. We are now at Item E1, Recognitions, Superintendent Passinelli.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a special recognition for our General Counsel, Ms. Linda Semlik. Would you mind coming to the podium? So I am recommending the adoption of Resolution Number A429, Recognizing Retired General Counsel Linda CT Semlik. She has been a longstanding member of San Juan Unified for 22 years. She's super thrilled to be at this podium. She has taken care of us for so many years, and we are incredibly grateful to you. And so thank you for allowing us to honor you in this way. Without your permission, I'd like to read the resolution. So I'm going to read it because I think this really captures Linda. So this is Resolution Number A429, Honoring Linda CT Semlik. Whereas Linda CT Semlik has led a distinguished career in the field of law and education, and whereas Linda has dedicated more than 22 years of service to the district's students, families, staff members, and community, and whereas Linda has been a trusted and valued counselor to multiple San Juan Unified superintendents and Board of Education, whereas Linda is currently the longest-serving member of the superintendent's cabinet with more than 18 years of service, whereas Linda is recognized, a recognized leader within the legal services field with schools, having provided mentorship and guidance to her staff and others, whereas Linda's knowledge and expertise in special education has provided guidance for families and practitioners, and whereas Linda has been an advocate for fairness, equity, and the rights of others through her work and her leadership within the district, and whereas Linda's efforts have directly impacted the lives of students, families, and educators, and whereas Linda will retire from service in the district sometime this summer. It doesn't say sometime, but I'm adding that. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education that we hereby recognize and express sincere appreciation to Linda CT Semlik for her services to the district and extend our heartfelt best wishes for her good health and happiness in retirement. So before, I don't know if you wish to say any comments, but maybe any comments from the board?
Question comments from the board, Ms. Viesquez.
I have an interest in prolonging this as much as possible. Linda, thank you very much for your years of service and for doing your absolute best to keep not only us up here on the dais out of trouble, but to really navigate this district through a number of challenges. I mean, throughout your career. I, of course, have a long roster of what I've seen in the last seven years, and I know that that's still a fraction of the long tenure that you've served here as part of this district. Thank you for every single day. Thank you for every, everything that you've done. I mean, I don't even want to start itemizing things because I'll inevitably forget. But also just thank you for the way that you led in a compassionate way, in a trustworthy way, in a way where we knew that the best interest was always in service to our community and to our kids. So thank you very much for all of your time spent with us, and I wish you well in your next chapter.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Ms. Semlik, I guess tonight I am the longest sitting board member up here. So on behalf of all our past colleagues and our current, I'm sure I speak that we are going to miss you. You have been an absolute sunshine to us. And as Ms. Viesquez said, to keep us all out of trouble is a job in itself. And many people don't know that House Counsel, it doesn't matter if it's Friday at 10:00 at night, she's taking a call and talking me off the ledge usually, but just you have been an absolute rock-solid advocate, and you have just done an outstanding job. And we wish you the very, very best in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, and I'll be brief. You know, I'll never forget the first time I got called to your office. I was only in this seat for maybe a week. And I was, without getting into all the gory details, I was very, very upset. And it was a whole entire thing. And I will never forget your kindness as a brand-new board member that has never done anything like this. And you were so wonderful with me and always just so warm and so welcoming. And you're really one of my favorite humans. And so I'm glad we became friends. We're going to keep being friends. I'm going to come to your house and pick blackberries and all the things that I keep saying I'm going to do. I'm going to do it. And I'm so proud of you, and I'm so thankful for just being in your space and getting to know you. I've learned a lot, so much. I don't think I've ever communicated how much I've learned from you to make it so I can do this job the way it's supposed to be done. So thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
This is an action item. So is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number A429, Recognizing Retiring General Counsel Linda Semlik?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Viesquez, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hernandez, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous.
Thank you very much. I just want to say it's been wonderful working with you all in the last year or so or just even a few months. The boards have been great. It's wonderful working with Melissa now. She's just a fantastic superintendent. And it's been my honor to serve the district for the 22-plus years that I have. So it's something I'll never forget. So thank you.
Hold on. All right. We are, we do not have any reports from staff. So we are now at Item E3, Board Appointed District Committees. Tonight, we have two reports. Let's begin with Vice Chair of the Facilities Committee, Ms. Melinda Avey.
Good evening, President Creason, Board members, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Melinda Avey, and I am the Assistant Chair for the Facilities Committee. And I'm here tonight to give our annual report. Our Chair, Anderson Berry, could not be here. He's traveling, and I know he would have liked to have been here with me, but he's not. So to give you an idea of who we are, our committee's charge is to provide advice to you on matters pertaining to facilities, including allocation of resources to provide adequate, safe, and appropriately maintained schools, needs of the district, including proposals related to categories which may require a large expenditure of funds or may be controversial in nature, and effective utilization of facilities due to enrollment problems caused by shifting, increasing, or declining enrollment or boundary issues. As you will see, we've had a really, really productive year. We started off the year with our annual organizational meeting. We reviewed our bylaws and the Brown Act, thanks to Ms. Semlik, who keeps us on track. In November, we provided input to LCAP on what we think is working to help students feel connected at school and what we think is not working. At that meeting, we also received an update and provided feedback on easement agreements with Carmichael Water District and California American Water Company. December was a really busy month. Committee members had expressed concern about school safety. Safe schools attended our meeting and shared with us what is currently being done to enhance the safety and security of our school sites. We also reviewed the most recent renderings of Katherine Johnson and Arcade Fundamental Middle School. In April, we attended the groundbreaking ceremony for Katherine Johnson. And in May, we attended a community meeting that was convened by Supervisor Desmond to address community concerns about transportation and sidewalks at Katherine Johnson. Since we're a community advisory committee, we reflect the community. So we try to get out to the community so we can bring back not just our opinion, but the community's opinion. Lastly, we provided the following feedback to the Boundary Committee. And the boundary issue is something that we've been very, very interested in. So I'll share with you our recommendations. Consider potential racial and economic segregation that may be created with new boundaries. Ensure a sense of community at school sites. Ensure the sites are able to cater to the communities they encompass. Address concerns around sidewalks and safe routes to school, especially on El Camino Avenue. Promote walking to encourage less traffic. Try to keep neighborhoods together and avoid geographic barriers. And finally, legacy students should have options. In February, Camp Winter shared with us the history of the camp and the many summer activities they offer. I've never been there. It sounds amazing. I'll probably never go to camp there, but it sounds like a very cool place to be. Post-COVID, the camp has seen many more campers, and inflation is making it difficult to fund delayed maintenance and needed capital improvements. We voted unanimously to support their request for a fee increase. At that meeting, we also received a bond program update and also reviewed and voted to approve minor changes to the school facilities handbook. In March, we discussed revisions to our bylaws. The Nutrition Services Department provided an update. And at the direction of the school board, we discussed the feasibility of nonpermitted community use of school facilities when school is not in session. We decided to form an ad hoc committee to more thoroughly research the issue, and it's anticipated that it will complete its work in October. In April, we received an update on new technology services available in the district, including a demonstration of the new interactive teaching panel. In May, we received an update on the Site Safety Implementation Plan, including district timelines for implementation. We also reviewed the boundary, the proposed boundary maps, and requested additional information on enrollment demographics. To gain insight into the community's perspective, we attended a meeting held by the district at Dyer Kelly that allowed the community to review the maps, ask questions, and make recommendations. In June, following a robust discussion, we voted unanimously to approve Map 1 as the map that most closely met the criteria we had discussed earlier in the year. At that meeting, we also had the opportunity to review the surplus property process, a project that we are looking forward to tackling next year. I'm really excited about it. It sounds like a very interesting thing to do, and I never thought I'd say that. So there you go. We visited three newly renovated school sites this year. Del Campo High School, Barrett Middle School, and Casa Robal High School. They are amazing. I mean, it's amazing. And we hope to visit more next year. Finally, we'd like to thank Mr. Kamara and his staff for their help. We know that working with a community advisory committee takes a lot of work, a lot of preparation, and a lot of time. And to be honest, sometimes a lot of patience. They really do go above and beyond in supporting this committee, and we are much smarter and much more effective because of it. Thank you. If you have questions, hopefully not, but be happy to answer what I can.
Thank you for the wonderful report. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Ms. Avey. We, I am privileged to be the liaison to this committee, and it is so well-run, so well-organized, as your report clearly dictates. And we appreciate you and the committee's time, and we do really evaluate your recommendations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll share that with them. It's a great committee. Everyone there, we have new members now because we have new board members, but they're all engaged, and they're all interested in what they're doing. On our ad hoc committee, we have five members. So that's pretty good, and they're all active. So we appreciate your support, and we appreciate the opportunity. So thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'd just like to say thank you for all the time. Because yeah, sure, you know, a staff and we put, there's a lot of time put in, but you put in a lot of time, volunteer gig. And it takes a lot of heart to throw yourself in there and to do that work. And there's so much going on in this district with all the new facilities. Safety is front of everybody's mind, and you know, facilities is at the top of that list. It's a lot. So I just want to say, just express my appreciation for you, your time, your volunteerism, and those of your colleagues. So just thank you.
I will share that with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we will hear from the Chair of the Bond Oversight Committee, Tim Slape. Mr. Kamara.
Thank you, President Creason. The Bond Oversight Committee Chairperson is Ryan Lay.
Okay.
So if you could either postpone or re-agendize for later in the meeting, that'd be appreciated.
Okay, I will ask how we technically go about that.
I think that could be Linda's last.
Linda's last action?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamara. What's the pleasure of the board? Should we vote to move the item, or should we table until the next meeting?
Is the chair on the way?
Yeah, do we have an ETA?
If he's en route, I could motion to postpone, or she.
Would you, how, do we have any other feelings from other members? My thought is let's just hold until the next meeting. Okay, okay, we will table until the next meeting? Okay, we do not have any reports from employee organizations or other district committees. So we are at Item E6, Closed Session Expulsion Actions. Mr. Hernandez.
The board voted unanimously to accept the hearing panel's recommendation of one expulsion in case S47, and to accept was written one stipulated expulsion in case number S50.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We are at Item F, Visitor Comments. We do have speaker cards for general visitor comment. Comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen counts down the time. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we're not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who can follow up with you. Ms. Rai, please facilitate public comment.
First, we have Shawna Savetevak, followed by Bennett Smith.
So my son is an incoming freshman at Rio Americano High School. And I went to the first meeting to, you know, learn more about what's going to be happening and program. And I was just a little concerned about some of the things I heard. And then when I did more research, I was even more concerned. And so I wanted to, you know, bring it to someone's attention about certified athletic trainer for these boys. It's very important, and they don't have that currently. It's a safety concern. It's, they save lives. You know, there's proof of many instances where, you know, people have been on the field. And, you know, without those trainers, they would not be here. So that was my, my first concern. Second one is we still have no lights for the field and no bleachers on top of it. So it's just, I graduated from there in 97. We had the same thing, but I thought by now, you know, we would have a home field and have lights and bleachers somewhere to sit and watch games. And, you know, it's just, I think, very, very important for our teams at the school to have that. And, you know, having other schools, having to travel, having to pack up everything. And when I heard you had to pack up our snack bar and all our gear and go have a home game somewhere else is just, you know, just very concerning. It's gone on this long at, at this school. So just kind of want to do, put it out there. I have, I think, a lot of parents here that showed up feeling the same way, you know. And we just kind of want to raise our hand and see if we can make a difference there for, for these kids. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bennett Smith, followed by Ivona Smith.
Hello, everyone. I'm speaking on behalf of all the parents and like families of all the high schoolers on the football team and the cheer team. My sister's an incoming freshman at Rio Americano. And I just feel like it would be really fun to have lights there just to be able to go to home games because I live in the neighborhood and like, sorry, I just feel like it would be really like amazing to have lights and also an athletic trainer. I want to look out for everyone on the cheer team and the football team in case they get injured. I just feel like there should be someone there to help them if that happens. Yeah, I just wanted to add on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ivona Smith, followed by Jeff Grins.
Hi, good evening, Board members. My name is Ivona Smith, and I live in the Rio Americano neighborhood. And I have an incoming freshman at this school who is going to be doing cheerleading, as my son mentioned. And it's been brought to my attention that the school, shockingly, doesn't have stadium seating. They don't have lights. And so for all of our games, we travel to Del Campo to play all of our home football games. So all of the equipment, all of the mats for cheerleading, everything travels back and forth. I know this has been an issue for a really long time. I know that it's a battle that Jesuit High School has also been battling in the neighborhood. And I know that they have made some traction with the neighborhood, and they're going to start having a few games this fall with temporary lights. And so I don't see why Rio Americano can't do the same. So I'm here to advocate for lights, stadium seating, and also, really, most importantly, the athletic trainer, of course, for student safety. I'm really just shocked that there isn't one. I just learned of that today. So I'm here to bring your attention to that, and I hope that you guys can, you know, do something to make some improvements for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff Grins, followed by Chase Correo.
Hi there. My name is Jeff Grins. Michelle and I are parents of six children, five of which are San Juan alumni and one who's a, who will be a graduating senior this year at Rio. I know we take for granted that athletic trainers are always there, but it's surprising when they aren't. So I would like to see that certified thing. It's, San Juan has done a fabulous job of updating their facilities. It's really exciting to see the new Arlen School, the things you're doing at, at all the schools, including Rio. And of course, I'm here to talk about doing more for the athletic facility, getting some stands, there may be some lights. And the thing I've heard a couple of times is about how the neighbors, when they built the school, the promise was there wouldn't be stands and lights. Well, the school was actually there before almost all those homes were built. Most of the kids who moved in the neighborhood were my age, and their parents are long gone. So I can't see that that's promise was made to anybody. So be brave. It's, it's almost a standard in our region that there are lights and stands at every school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Chase Correo.
I am a player at Rio Americano High School, and I want to address the issue about the not having an athletic trainer. Last year during a game versus Capital Christian, I broke my leg and suffered a compound fracture with my tibial fibula. And there was no medical staff on the field, and it was just very inexperienced people. And it took about 30, 40 minutes to get me off the field. So like you hear about these things and don't ever think they're going to happen, but when they happen and there's no athletic trainers or any sort of medical staff like that, it's very difficult for me in that situation, obviously. So with proper care for our players, I think they'll impact the team a lot. And about the lights and stands issues, we're losing, the San Juan District itself is losing players to other rivaling private high schools because they think, especially at Rio Americano, since we have no lights or fields or bleachers, they think we're, our football program is not as good as it could be and compared to the rival private high schools. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Parake.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about the real lights. I actually live on the other side of the soccer field on Regency Circle, and I am for these lights. I've lived in the neighborhood 20 years. And to, you know, to the young man's comment, I think whatever commitment was made, you know, in 1960, like, I'm sorry, when I was born, whenever, it's a long time ago. It's time to move on. I, it's a beautiful campus. It's a beautiful football field, that huge investment that's been made. I was a high school cheerleader. I'm telling you, that memory is with me, you know, throughout my entire life. Kids need these positive experiences. And I want to see them have their home games so I can hear them calling out the plays in my backyard. And I don't know that the neighbors today would feel differently than I do. We have a lot of young families that have moved in over the last couple of years. It's been a huge turnover. So I just want to speak out as someone that is the neighbor, wants the lights, wants to go to the games. So let's do it.
And that was our last public comment.
Thank you for your comments. We are at Item G, Consent Calendar. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Ms. Viesquez.
I would like to remove Item G23.
Okay. Mr. Avey?
I would like to remove Item G7.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Items G1 through G6, G8 through G22, and G24 through G26?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Viesquez, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Avey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. Item G7 was pulled from the consent calendar, Mr. Avey.
Thank you. This matter is related to the CEOPA plan. I had a few questions. It wasn't quite clear in the instructions if this was the annual update submission or if this was the every-three-year submission to the, to the state.
Let's have Director Vanessa Adolphson come forward. Thanks.
Hello, good evening. This is an annual submission in our Section B. We are submitting, it has not been revised, that is every three years.
Okay, so Section B, this is the beginning of the three-year cycle?
Correct, this will be year one.
Okay. So that's my only question, then I just had a comment. I've just, I've received a lot of feedback from the community on special education, and especially having just revised our bylaws around the Community Advisory Committee to really focus on special education and their focus on the CEOPA. I think it might be a good idea in the near future if we have an agenda item on this, just so we can get a full report and kind of get briefed on it since it's the, the foundation of our special education plan. So I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to approve G7?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Mr. AV. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Vieskas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Item G twenty-three was pulled from the consent calendar. Ms. Vieskas?
I just wanted to pull this item. This is similar to a lot of things on consent. Uh, a lot of work goes into these items and specifically, so this, I, item G twenty-three is the lease agreement between Sacramento County, um, California Children's Services Program and the district. And the CCS program serves very medically vulnerable kids, um, in Sacramento County. And the CCS program in general is something that, uh, I've followed very closely, both professionally, but also have a lot of, um, connection to. And so this, uh, just for a little bit of context, I wanted to make sure my colleagues knew. This has been an ongoing, um, conversation with the county for about three years. And we are the only school-based site to offer these programs in the entire county. And we're one of three in the entire county. And so these medical therapy unit programs provide really critical services. A lot of time went into working closely with our county partners, uh, to make this work. And so I wanted to just take a moment and acknowledge that really critical work because it's a very, very delicate uh, program to very medically vulnerable children that we serve. And I'm proud to be able to offer it on one of our campuses. And I wanted to take a moment to say thanks to staff for, for working it out and continuing conversations with the county. And so with that, I'd be happy to still move the item as well.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, the item was moved by Ms. Vieskas. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. We are at item I one, community eligibility provision. Mr. Kamada.
Good evening, and thank you, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. Uh, we are excited tonight to bring Director of Nutrition Services, uh, Ms. Nainare up to give a report on the community eligible, uh, provision. Uh, once she has completed the report, she can take some questions if the, if the board may have. So thank you, Ms. Nair.
Thank you, Mr. Kamada, Madam Board President, um, Madam Superintendent and honored members of the board. The, um, community eligibility provision, uh, was brought under ad code, um, four-nine-five, um, five-six-four-point-three. Um, and this came under one of the California Universal Meals, um, program when that went into effect last year. And one of the requirements of that was that, um, when we had what was called a identified student percentage of forty percent or more, we would make them into a provision site, which either could be a community eligible provision or a provision one or provision two. Um, so what I would like to present is this, this was an alternative meal counting and collection procedure that was made available nationwide, starting two thousand fourteen and fifteen. It definitely reduces the burden of districts having to collect federal meal applications and having to, um, complete what is called the verification, um, process or categorize meals into free, reduced, and paid, which thereby, um, does not help with identifying students' eligibility, um, status. Identified students are those that are directly certified for meals at no cost. And this is based on their participation in, in CalFresh, CalWorks, um, the food distribution program, Medi-Cal Free. Um, s- school districts that would be identifying students would, should have an identified student percentage of forty percent. And this is based on enrollment, um, that could then participate in CEP. For determination of CEP, the numbers are taken, that is as of April one, um, of the school year prior to starting the CEP. For San Juan, historically, in the year two thousand eighteen and nineteen, we had, um, nine schools that were approved, what we called individually. Each side had an ISP of sixty-two percent or higher, which gave us a federal reimbursement of almost a hundred percent back from the federal. So the district did not have to, um, fork out any funding and the schools are listed there. Um, then in two thousand nineteen and twenty, four more schools were added, which gave us a total of thirteen schools under this particular program. Um, and once again, the identified student percentages were sixty-two percent or higher. And that gave us a hundred percent back from federal. Um, once the California Universal Meals Program came into effect in the year twenty-two, twenty-three, um, we grouped forty-six schools into what was called one CEP group. And we had an identified student percentage of fifty-one point zero-two. Federal reimbursed us at a free eligibility, so they gave us funding reimbursement at eighty-one point three, six-three percent. And under California Universal Meals, the state made up the difference and made us whole by giving us another eighteen point seven-three. So as a department and a district, we were not losing, uh, the difference was made up by the state. Um, moving forward for twenty-three, twenty-four, as of April first this year, um, our district-wide identified student percentage is at forty-two point two-three percent. This means that if we approve that, we will get a federal reimbursement, um, at sixty-seven point five-seven percent. Um, the feds will reimburse us at thirty-two point, um, four-three percent. But under California Universal Meals, once again, the state is going to make up with the reimbursement difference and make, um, us whole to a hundred percent. Once again, we will not be you, losing any funding. Um, there, of course, is another district, um, advantage that we would like to bring. And that is our current E-rate discount is eighty percent. And that is based on an eligibility for free and reduced meals under the Schools and Libraries Program. By moving to a district-wide CEP model for meal reimbursement, our E-rate discount would increase to ninety percent under the Schools and Libraries Program Discount Guidelines, which could potentially provide an additional two hundred fifty thousand in savings to the district for IT services that are purchased under E-rate. So there is another advantage for our district for that. So, um, this is what we had, where we are requesting that we move, um, district-wide as a CEP. We, under California Universal Meals, we are feeding everyone at no cost anyway. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much for the report. Any comments, questions? Mr. AV?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the report. Um, I think especially as we're moving into, um, I mean, just looking at the budget that's being signed right now, I think we're moving into some more austere years in the future. And so I really appreciate your diligence. I mean, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a big saving. So, um, I appreciate your work on this. I also just wanted to quickly share that in my house, the current favorites are orange chicken, chicken patties, and cheese breadsticks. So I don't know if you know anybody, but you know, those are popular.
Thank, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Vieskas?
I just want to offer my thanks as always for your work. I was really excited when we first, um, hit the ground running on CEP. I mean, it truly was voluntary and it was up to, um, us, and by us, I mean you and your team, to do the extra work to get the qualifications and to make sure that our, our children could be served. And just to put some context on what CEP means, right? It means, you know, before, in the past, whenever a child was getting a meal at school, they might've had to go to a, a separate line or in, um, some way kind of be identified as being eligible for a free or reduced lunch program. And now you just get to go to school and eat. And no one is checking, no one is, um, checking a balance, n- no one's sending a note home back to your parents to say that there's a deficit in some way. Um, and as a student in this district that relied on the free reduced lunch program for my regular meals, seeing the evolution, um, it sounds easy on a bunch of slides of papers, uh, but I know what it means every day to these kids. And so I'm really excited to see us move and really truly take advantage of the program from its inception and watch it evolve, um, through the transformation of universal school meals healing here in California. So thank you for all of your work and for continuing to be on top of every quick change that the federal government gives us, the state government gives us, to ultimately keep our kids fed. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
So just a couple of quick notes. Once I want, first, I just want to say this report is a great example of the breadth that falls on your plate. It's beyond, you know, when we think about nutrition services, we think about breakfasts and lunches. And, you know, usually that's as far as the thought goes. There is so much planning in the numbers and there, this is a wonderful example of the depth of your work. And we are so lucky to have you on this team. Uh, you have implemented so much in your time and you do it with so much care and so much warmth. And you've heard me say this to you, and I'll say it again every time you're in front of me. Kids can't learn when they're hungry. And your job is imperative to make sure all of our sites have what they need to make sure the learning can continue. So just so much appreciation, and I won't repeat what my colleagues had said, but I'm so happy that we're moving away from this idea that we need to shame kids, um, that may not have lunch money. When I was growing up, it was green cards, like you either had a yellow lunch card or you had a green lunch card. And we knew what the green lunch card meant. Um, and I'm just so glad that we're getting away from that. And also kids that may not qualify but are still hungry get to eat too. So just thank you for all your work. It's so much broader than I think so many people know, um, but I see it and I appreciate you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Thank you.
We are at item I two, California School Dashboard, Dashboard Local Indicators. Ms. Lovinski.
Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board receive a report on San Juan Unified's progress for the local indicators related to the state accountability dashboard. Dr. John Toner Torrey, Director of Continuous Improvement in LCAP, and Mr. Christopher Smith, our Assistant Director of Assessment, Evaluation, and Planning, have been working together facilitating a process to collect information related to our progress. This evening, Mr. Smith is going to be reporting San Juan's results using the standards and self-reflection tools approved by the State Board of Education. Additionally, the results of this report are available to the public through the California School Dashboard. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Smith.
Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, Ms. Cunningham. I'm here to present to you San Juan Unified School District's local indicators. This evening, I will be sharing information regarding the California School Dashboard Local Indicator Requirements, San Juan's Local Indicator Results that will be posted on the two thousand twenty-three dashboard, and information regarding the timeline and release of the two thousand twenty-three dashboard. California has adopted state and local indicators to measure the school district and individual school site performance in each of the state priorities. Performance data on state and local indicators is publicly reported on the California School Dashboard to provide parents and educators with information on school and district progress, as well as assist in identifying strengths, challenges, and areas for improvement. State indicators applied to all districts, schools, and student groups are based on data that is collected consistently across the state and are aligned to state priority areas four, five, six, and eight. Local indicators, indicated in blue on this slide, are the focus of our presentation tonight, are based on data collected at the local level by districts and are aligned to state priority areas one, two, three, six, and seven. California has approved the following local indicator requirements for districts to measure and report progress on the related state priority areas, which include one, annually measuring its progress in state priorities, one, two, three, six, and seven, using the California adopted self-reflection tool. Two, reporting the results to the local governing board as part of a non-consent item at the same public meeting in which the LCAP is approved. And three, reporting the results to the public through the dashboard utilizing the California adopted self-reflection tools for each local indicator. A district that meets all three of the state requirements for a local indicator will receive a performance rating of met for that local indicator on the dashboard. A district that does not meet all three of the state requirements for a local indicator will receive a performance rating of not met. And a district that does not meet all three of the state requirements for a local indicator for two or more consecutive years will receive a performance rating of not met for two or more years. Before sharing the results for each local indicator, I will begin by sharing the Sam, that San Juan has met all three of the state requirements for each local indicator. For local indicator one, basic services, our performance level is met. This local indicator requires LEAs to measure its progress in meeting the Williams Settlement requirements at one hundred percent of school sites. The required information for this local indicator are also reported as part of the Instruction Materials Suffi- So, Sufficiency Resolution, which was approved by the board on September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and the School Accountability Report Card, SARC, which was approved by the board on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. The results of this local indicator that will be reported on the California Dashboard includes the percentage of misassigned teachers of English learners and total teacher misassignments is one percent. The percent, percentage of vacant positions is point two percent. The percentage of students without access to standards-aligned instructional materials, which is zero percent. And the percentage of facilities that did not meet the good repair standard, which is zero percent. As a note, new legislation now requires the California Department of Education, the California Commission on Teaching Credentialing, and districts to share teacher data. This new legislation has changed the process for how data is collected and reported, which is, has resulted in the CDE being enabled to process and release this data by the required date of February first for two years in a row. Since teacher assignment data has not been released by the California Department of Education, districts have been advised to report local data for this indicator. When the, the data is available, the state will populate the teacher assignment data on the California Department of Education's data reporting website, DataQuest. What is reported here for teacher misassignments and vacant teacher positions is a snapshot taken on May third. For example, on this day, San Juan had five vacant teacher positions out of two thousand fifty, which is equals point two percent and represents classes that went unfi- unfilled without a substitute teacher. Twenty-one out of two thousand fifty teachers were misassigned, which equals one percent and represents classes that were largely filled by substitute teachers who may not have or were in the process of obtaining their credential or specialized certificate. In response to our teacher misassignments, our plan is to identify those teachers who are misassigned, the reason for the misassignment, and provide a pathway to appropriate assignment. For example, reasons of, for a misassignment may include correcting a clerical issue to obtaining an additional certificate to getting a teaching credential. Overall, what this, this data highlights is the impact on, of the teacher shortage in filling daily staff vacancies. For local indicator two, state standards, our performance level is met. This local indicator requires LEAs to report its progress in implementing state academic standards. Standards, frameworks, courses, and curriculum are not adopted at the same time. So this indicator allows districts to reflect on the different stages of implementation they are in with, with each of the standards. The results of this local indicator that will be reported using the state-adopted self-reflection tool on the California Dashboard includes progress in providing professional learning for teaching the academic standards and/or curriculum frameworks. For ELA, English Language Development, Mathematics, Next Generation Science Standards, and History/Social Science, we are at a level four, which is full implementation. The second category is making instructional materials that are aligned to the academic standards and/or curriculum. The second category is making instructional materials that are aligned to the academic standards and/or curriculum frameworks. For the Next Generation Science Standards, we are at a Level Five, which is full implementation and sustainability. For ELA and the ELD and Mathematics, we are at a Level Four, which is full implementation. For History/Social Science, we are at a Level Three, which is initial implementation. This puts us at an average of four in this area. The third category, our policies and programs to support staff in identifying areas for improvement aligned to the academic standards and/or curriculum frameworks, such as collaboration time and data conversations. For ELA, ELD, Mathematics, Next Generation Science Standards, and History/Social Science, we are at a Level Three, which is initial implementation. The fourth category is focused on districts' progress in implementing the Career Technical Education, CTE, Health Education, Physical Education, PE, Visual and Performing Arts, VAPA, and World Language Standards. For CTE, Health Education, and VAPA, we are at a Level Four, which is full implementation. For PE and World Languages, we are at a Level Three, which is initial implementation. This puts us at an average of 3.6 in this area. Finally, the fifth category is supporting and engaging teachers and administrators in identifying their professional learning needs and providing support. In this category, we are at a Level Four, which is full implementation. Areas where we made progress this year include: professional learning, where we designed a new professional development menu for school sites. There are multiple options for professional learning formats that have met a variety of needs. Around policies and procedures, capacity is continuing to be built at sites through a wide range of opportunities, such as book studies and collaborations with outside partners. Additionally, instructional assistance are now being included in professional development opportunities. Chromebooks have been added for every classroom. Finally, CTE programs are continuing to be added, such as the Construction Pathway at Encina and the Aviation Pathway at Miraloma. Areas that we will be focusing on next year to improve include: increasing professional learning for elementary math and supporting the newly adopted high school math curriculum; continuing to provide support for all standards and frameworks with special emphasis on newly adopted standards and frameworks; and creating partnerships at school sites for integrated ELD instruction. For local indicator three, parent engagement, our performance level is met. This local indicator requires LEAs to measure its progress in implementing policies, programs, and practices related to parent and family engagement in the areas of: building relationships between schools, staff, and families; building partnerships for student outcomes; seeking input for decision-making. The results of this local indicator will be reported using the state-adopted self-reflection tool and will report that we are currently at Level 3.75 for building relationships, 3.5 for building partnerships, and 3.25 for seeking input on decision-making. This puts us between initial implementation and full implementation for all three categories. The areas where we made progress this year include: increasing the percentage of parents of low-income English learner, foster, and homeless youth in leadership roles, such as school-site council, English learner advisory committee, district English learner advisory committee, LCAP Parent Advisory Committee, and Superintendent's Parent Advisory Committee; increasing family workshops and PD for staff; increasing community partnerships; continuation of the Neighborhood Learning Project; increasing options to participate in workshops using virtual, in-person, and hybrid formats; and the launch of the Face Mobile, which is a mobile family resource center on wheels that travels to all schools and helps connect families to their school, district departments, and community resources. Areas we have identified for improvement include: expanding opportunities to assist capacity building for staff to create a welcoming school environment and creating ways for voice to be elevated; expanding communication outreach to informed families; increasing access to two-way communication; and during Face Mobile visits, refine ways to understand the needs of the families. I would also like to note for this local indicator, there was an additional requirement to identify a focus group of diverse educational partners and ask the group for input on data that should be considered when the district self reflects on its progress. The focus group included 48 members from the educational partner groups we have engaged throughout the year in the development of our district plans. And the data used in the self-reflection process included, but was not limited to, educational partner input and engagement and the engagement process for the district plan, such as the LCAP; local indicator data, such as the climate survey; LCAP metrics and actions; workshops and trainings provided by the Face Department; and focus group input. For local indicator six, school climate, our performance level is met. This local indicator requires LEAs to measure student perceptions of school safety and connectedness through a local climate survey that is administered at least every other year. As a note, in San Juan, we administer our climate survey yearly to staff and parents in addition to students and use the results to inform our planning. This evening, however, I will only be reporting on the student responses since this presentation is focused on our local indicators. The school climate survey was administered to students in grades four through 12 from January 10th through February 10th. The results of this local indicator that will be reported on the California dashboard includes the percent of students in grades four through 12 who responded "agree" or strongly agree in the following categories. For high expectations and caring relationships, the percent of students who responded positive was 59.7%. For participation, engagement, and motivation, the percent of students who responded positive was 56.8%. For school culture and sense of belonging, the percent of students who responded positive was 60.4%. And for safety, the percent of students who responded positive was 60.7%. Areas where we made progress this year include: participation, where we saw an increase in overall participation in 2223 compared to 2122; revising our climate survey prompts to be more aligned to our eight-point commitment to educational justice, LCAP goals, and local indicator six self-reflection tool; and outreach by utilizing communication in addition to utilizing district communication in addition to school communication. Areas where we will focus on to improve include: continuing to increase the overall participation rate in the survey to match pre-COVID rates; increasing the percentage of students who responded "agree" or strongly "agree" through the changes made to our LCAP actions focused on communication in multiple languages, workforce diversity, staffing to support English learner, immigrant, and refugee students and families; staffing for campus supervision, student relationships, safety and security; leadership advocacy and enrichment opportunities; as well as dual enrollment, state-seal pathway, alternative education, and credit recovery opportunities. For local indicator seven, broad course of study, our performance level is met. This local indicator requires LEAs to report to the extent to which students have access to and are enrolled in a broad course of study. This is determined by the percentage of students with a report card grade in all broad course of study subject areas. For grades TK through eight, this includes the percentage of students enrolled in ELA, Math, Science, Social Science, and PE. For grades nine through 12, it includes the percentage of students enrolled in courses based on graduation requirements for ELA, Math, Science, Social Science, World Language, PE, and VAPA. The percentage of TK through fifth-grade students with a report grade in all broad course of study subject areas is 90.2%. The percentage of sixth through eighth-grade students with a report card grade in all broad course of study subject areas is 92.1%. For ninth through 12th grade, the percentage of students enrolled in a broad course of study met enrollment expectations. This is determined by the number of semesters required to meet state graduation requirements in ELA, Math, Science, Social Science, World Language, PE, and VAPA. Areas of noteworthy strength include: graduation requirements aligned to A through G and CTE courses; graduation requirements that exceed the state requirements to prepare San Juan students to be college and career-ready; and the opportunities for credit recovery and tutoring. Areas where we will focus on to improve include: providing professional learning for teachers around designated and integrated English language development instruction; professional learning and collaboration time for general education and special education teachers in order to increase the use of inclusive practices for students with disabilities in general education environments; revising our student code process for students with disabilities to access required general education courses and meet graduation requirements; and increasing IA staffing and hours to provide students with IEP's classroom support during the school day. Finally, regarding the California School Dashboard, we are expecting the results of both the state and local indicators to be released in December. Unlike the 2022 dashboard, which only reported status, the 2023 dashboard will report both current year status for achievement and change from the prior year for growth when calculating performance. President Creason, this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions for the board.
Thanks so much for the report. Any comments, questions from the board? It was so good. We were left with no questions. All right. Appreciate the report very, very much. It's nice to see you again, and happy summer. Good to see you. We are at item I three, Local Control and Accountability Plan. Ms. Lewinsky.
Thank you. Good evening again. As you know, the 2124 LCAP is a three-year plan that supports the continuous improvement of student performance within the eight state priorities with an emphasis on English learner, low-income, and foster youth students. Prior to adopting the LCAP, Education Code requires that a public hearing of the governing board is held to solicit recommendations and comments from the public regarding actions and expenditures included in the plan. As you know, that occurred at the last meeting on June 13th. Additionally, the adoption of the LCAP and adoption of the district budget must be board-approved at the same meeting, which is scheduled for this evening. The superintendent is recommending that the board approve the San Juan Unified 202124 Local Control Accountability Plan, and Dr. Tornatore and I are here to address any additional questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Any comments, questions from the board? I know we had robust discussion last meeting. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the district's LCAP? Moved by Mr. Hernandez. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Kretcheck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're at item I four, Choices Charter School California School Dashboard Local Indicators. Mr. Ginter.
Good evening, President Creason.
I'm sorry, before you start, we're having some technical difficulties with our screen. So as you're moving through, because we can't see, if you could just say the slide, so folks, would that be helpful? So folks could follow on in our packets, that'd be great.
No problem.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board receive a report on Choices, San Juan Choices Charter Schools' measurement of progress for the five local indicators related to the state accountability dashboard. Much like you heard for the last presentation for the district, a lot of the background information applies as well. I'll turn things over now to Mr. Brent Gibbons to give the presentation for Choices Charter School.
Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. Thank you for having me tonight. I am here to present the San Juan Choices Charter School Local Control Accountability Plan Local Indicators Annual Update for 2023. Moving to Slide Two, we did meet the requirements for all five of the local indicators. So I'll briefly go over each of them. Indicator one, again, is part of the state accountability system. These local indicators from the California School Dashboard, the results reflect the data from our self-reflection tool and measure progress of the state priority areas one, two, three, six, and seven. So the priority, the performance level for priority one, basic services, was met in all areas with no issues. No teacher misassignments, no students without access to standards-aligned materials, and all facilities were in the good repair category. Slide three, the performance level for priority two, academic standards, was met with all items falling within the initial implementation through full implementation with sustainability levels. Slide four, the performance level for priority three, parent and family engagement, was met. The key items being reported on our 2022 Parent-School Satisfaction Survey at 90% or higher included the highest ratings for parents being well-informed about their students' academic progress. We're also pleased to note that the percentage of parents reporting that they checked their students' progress online went up 25% from the previous year. Slide five, indicator four, the performance level for priority six, school climate, was met with many items being reported on our 2022 Student and Parent-School Satisfaction Survey at 100%. Again, we are proud that our students reported feeling safe on our campus and had positive experiences with a caring and responsive staff. 100% of parents also reported that Choices was a positive and supportive educational and social environment that they would recommend to their friends and family. Slide six, continuing on with priority six, 96% of students with disabilities reported feeling safe at Choices. And 64% of those students experienced less anxiety since attending our school. 100% of our graduates would recommend Choices to other students, and they reported that there was a teacher or other adult who really cared about them. 34% of our graduates stated that they would not have graduated had they not enrolled at Choices. And finally, slide seven, state priority number seven, this performance level was met. This is the broad course of study category with three key findings. We have increased the access to advanced-level courses by growing our AP courses from two to six classes in the last five years, and there are no barriers to enter any of our honors or AP courses. In addition, we are committed to expanding our course offerings with the addition of at least one new course each year and growing our CTE pathways. Again, as a small school, Choices Charter School is proud of the ongoing work from our teachers and staff to offer a wide range of core academic programs and electives while ensuring that our students and families feel safe, known, valued, and connected. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Gibbons, I just want to compliment you on indicator four, slide five, that very rare that you have 100% student satisfaction and the parents as well. So I think that's something to be noted. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comments, questions? Yeah, I'd say, just to echo Mr. Hernandez's comment, quite often where you're looking at surveys, when you survey students and parents, they're not often the same, right? They're just different experiences, and it's just different. So that caught my eye too. But thank you so much for the report. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We are at item I five, Choices Charter School Local Control and Accountability Plan. Mr. Ginter.
Good evening once again. The superintendent is recommending that the board approves the revision to the San Juan Choices Charter School 2021 through 2024 LCAP. As you know, this item was brought to you for a public hearing on June 13th. And if you have any questions you'd like to ask, Mr. Gibbons is here to answer those questions for you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the Choices Charter School LCAP? Moved by Ms. Kretcheck. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Avi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Aye. That was unanimous. We are at item I six, adoption of the Twenty-three, Twenty-four Budget. Ms. Stahlheber.
Good evening, President Creason, board members, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board adopt the San Juan Unified Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four Budget, including the Education Protection Account spending plans for the district and Choices Charter School, the excess reserves and the ending fund balance, and the district staffing standards, and also approve the revisions to the Twenty-Twenty-Two, Twenty-Twenty-Three Budget.
Lots of discussion on this last meeting as well. Any comments, questions from the board? Seeing none, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt the Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four Budget, including the Education Protection Account spending plans for the district and Choices Charter School, the excess reserves and the ending fund balance, and the district staffing standards, and approve this revision to the Twenty-Twenty-Two, Twenty-Twenty-Three Budget?
I'm moved.
Moved by Ms. Yeskes. Is there a second?
Second.
Hernandez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. It's the last meeting of the year. We're doing the best we can. We are at item I seven, Department of Toxic Substance Control Preliminary Endangerment Assessment for Arcade Fundamental Middle School. Mr. Cabarda.
Yes, thank you, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board hold a public hearing for receiving public comment on the Preliminary Endangerment Assessment, otherwise known as the PEA, for Arcade Fundamental Middle School, project number zero zero one dash nine five one two dash P one. If the board has any questions after the public hearing, I have Director of Facilities Nicholas Arps here, Associate Vice President of Environment for AECOM, and Senior Project Manager overseeing the arcade construction, Ms. Martha Estrada. So thank you.
I declare the topic of the Department of Toxic Substance Control Preliminary Endangerment Assessment for Arcade Fundamental Middle School a public hearing, and it is now open for public comment. There being no comments, I declare the public hearing closed. Do any board members have comments or questions? Ms. Yeskes.
I do. So thank you for the report as part of our process. One of the recommendations towards the end, there's there is just a note about further action being recommended before school occupancy occurs. I'm just curious if you wouldn't mind expanding a little bit on that. I am on page thirteen two, that's the only number indicated on here. So it's towards the very end of the assessment.
Good evening. So yes, this is one of the first steps as we go through the process. So this is the preliminary action. Or once we go through that, there'd be a supplemental instruction that goes along with it, where DTSC will request additional sampling as we go. Once we get past that part, then if there is anything that needs to be remediated, we'll go into what's called a removal action work plan. And that'll be the last step of doing remediation remediation action for that site cleanup. So this is kind of the first step and possibly several after this.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Krevcek.
Could you provide some time, like a timeline for that? How long is that? Because this is a thirty-day review. So is your timeline beyond thirty days? Just trying to understand.
Well, this portion is a thirty-day comment period that we have open for the community to put in comments. After that, it's, we're kind of at the timeline of DTSC for the review process for each step of it. If we do go into a raw or the removal action plan, there will be another community outreach point at that. I believe that's a thirty days as well.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay, so mine are, just want to make sure that folks that are listening, that they have students at Arcade, are rest assured that their children will have a place to go in August. So we're not worried that the kids are not going to be going to school at Arcade in August, right?
Well, we're not worried, no, but there are, you know, there are opportunities at this time that there could be some delays in the process. But we're not at that stage in the process of that stage. The good thing is we have an active school site right now. So if we do have any delays, we'll be able to keep our students in the existing buildings.
And that's what I was saying.
If we have a delay, then we can, then as we work through the process, we'll be able to move those students over when the
The beginning of your response scared the heck out of me. I was like, no.
Say there is a delay. You know, we also have to contend with the with the with the weather that we've had. So we had, I think, over forty weather days. So we're still contending and trying to recover from that. Could DTSC hold us up a little bit? We're not sure. We're working very closely with them, but we, the saving grace is the existing building.
Yep, and that's the that's the pin I'm trying to put in on this is even if there's delays, the kids will have somewhere to go to school at that site. Because I can see how that could be very scary as written as stated, right? So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, we're not in the delay stage. I'm not, I will not say for sure, yes, there will be delay, but it is a possibility if things don't line up exactly the way they should. So right now.
But I'm still trying to make that incap be, no matter what, there is a building they will go to. It may not be the new one, but there is a building for them to go to. Just say yes.
We will not tear down the existing building until we have a new building to occupy.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you for the information. We'll stay tuned.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We are at item J, Board Reports. Are there any board reports? Ms. Stravy.
I just wanted to report back the community meeting that I had at Belavista went really well. I think we had about a hundred people there, discussed all kinds of issues from fentanyl to sidewalks and safe routes to school. It was just, it was a good meeting, good feedback. I'm looking forward to holding them in the future.
Awesome. Any other reports? Okay, seeing none, future agenda. We are on item K, future agenda. Do any board members wish to add any items to a future agenda? Ms. Stravy.
Just per my earlier comments, I would hope to get a presentation on our SALPA plan at some point in the new future, if that's not already calendared.
And I believe that's that's in the cards, right?
It is. Special education is a priority for us. There will be more than one discussion next year related to special education. Any others?
Okay, well, with that, we do not need to return to closed session. We are adjourned and happy summer. See you in August.